7:00 PM, 28th July 14th, 2015. And KRS 61.8101G is a discussion between a public agency and representative of the business entity in a discussion concerning a proposal. If open discussion would jeopardize the sitting of ours.
Siding. Siding. It is siding.
Siding, okay. Of business. All right, so that we at the end of this, we'll go into executive session. So let's go ahead and start the meeting. Recognize groups or individuals. Ma'am?
I don't know who's scariest to that, but KRS, I was.
Uh huh. You?
I just came to learn.
Oh, good. Welcome, welcome. Have any questions, or?
No.
Nothing? Okay, very good. All right, well, to receive from input, we don't have much public here, so. No bids or contracts or proposals or service requests. So we'll go down to number four, which will be the HRB, the DRB, and planning zoning recommendations. And go to A, which is discuss the proposed changes for planning zoning regulations.
And Councilman Hagan?
Yeah.
Thank you. I asked the mayor to put this on the agenda. Just to kind of begin at the beginning, about maybe eight years ago or longer, the planning commission started putting together a list of proposed changes to zoning regulations. When I was a planning commissioner, I remember this list started being developed, and it came from several different sources, from individuals who were making applications of zoning changes, it came from board adjustments, it came from planning commissioners. So it's just this long list of things that, kind of a shopping list, that the planning commission wanted to one, that someday start looking at. It's a several-page-long list of things. So at the beginning of this year, the planning commission formed this committee to start looking at these changes and start developing some recommendations and make it through the process of actually making these changes. And Bill and I are on that committee, the mayor asked us to be on that committee. There's a magistrate's on it, there's planning commissioners, there's board adjustments, members are on it, Mayor Hagan's on it, it's kind of a broad range of people. So we've been meeting, we've met four times this year, like four times, and we've just started going down through this list. And our job has been to, amongst ourselves, we look at these recommendations and we've kind of decide, is it something we think should go forward or not? And so we've kind of been marching through this, some of them have kind of agreed that we shouldn't make changes, some of them we've agreed to. And what will happen on the ones that we think should go forward, there will be a public hearing, since it's zoning regulation, change will be a public hearing, then the planning commission will make a recommendation, and then that, each of those individual changes will go to legislative body that we thought on it, whether it's something in the city or whether it's something in the county. So we're going through those. This one recommendation, we talked about it like three times in three of our meetings, and we never could really come to an agreement. And so Bill and I thought, let's just bring it here. There's no sense having a public hearing on it if this body really isn't interested in doing it. So we thought, well, let's just kind of jump ahead a little bit, talk about it. So the purpose of this meeting tonight is, Bill and I agree, I'm just kind of go, can I go over what this is and make sure everybody understands it, and then we'll kind of decide on what we want to do. Let's see. So what this came down to was, and it's on your iPad, as we said earlier, is a change to the zoning amendment with regards to new construction or additional construction add-ons, that, those kind of things. And you can see on there that the proposal is to require a footer, a plat, a survey, once a footer is installed on new construction or on any addition or relocation and so forth. Right now, that's not required. And the problem that it's come up, that's happened over the years, is as you, some of these things you're well aware of, something gets built, then they find out it's not on, it's off the, it goes past the property line or it's in easement. And what happens, it comes back to the board adjustments, people ask for variance, and puts the board adjustments in a pretty tight spot, where somebody's already built a swimming pool on an easement, and, you know, it's wrong. Or they built an extension on their house, they built a deck. There's quite a few instances of those springs movements that's happened. Autozone, a building is an example, something that was built, you know, people come in with a plat that's approved, then when they actually build it, it's built. So this is, this is a proposal to have a replating of it or resurvey once the footer's planted. So that then, that comes back to the planning commission, and then they know that it's, that's kind of the crux of it. If you look at your, on your iPad, there's these two suggestions. This first one, amend the survey requirement, that, for professional office, commercial, industrial structures, any structural current variance, you can read it. That would apply to the entire county. That's something that, that would come to, if it's recommended by the planning commission from all the existing bodies, we go along. That is actually going to be on a public hearing on July 28th, that's already set up for a public hearing. This next alternative would be something that we, in the city, could, if we wished, impose, and it adds the addition, it says any new structure, it essentially adds in residential. So it would require any residential, any home to have this survey. This request came from the board of adjustments because of the problems they have run into over the years, of people bringing in something that's platted properly, then it's built, then they sell the property, a few years later, that person comes around, wants to do something on their house, and they find out, oops, your bathroom that you had under the house is down, or there's a swimming pool, or whatever. So this would protect, well, actually the person building it, and protect the person who's buying it next. So what I would like to do tonight is just make sure, is just to kind of present this and leave you all a chance to think about it over the next couple of weeks, if you want to call Jan, ask some questions, you can ask me questions now. And what we have to, what I'd like for us to decide is, do we want to have a public hearing on this and gather other input, and then come back here and make our decision? That's kind of, I don't want you to decide tonight, because you've just looked at it. But that's what this process is all about, so. That's kind of it in a nutshell. Anybody have any questions or anything?
Yeah, I just, I've posed this twice at various meetings, and the way I interpret this, that you were going to have to get a survey of your property anytime you made a change to it or an addition to it. And it stems from, I think, the planning zoning catching backlash from things being built improperly, because people haven't checked their boundary lines, or they knew where their boundary line, or where their paves or their stakes were, or their lines on their property were. To me, I think, instead of leaving a $700 or $800 survey to everybody that has a change made on the property, I think it's the homeowner's responsibility or the contractors to know where your property lines are. I know exactly where my property lines are. I know exactly where I'm going to build something or not build something. And I think it's just kind of a backlash from, that they've caught from people building things that didn't know where their property lines were, and now they're going to make everybody do the surveys. And I think you need to take responsibility to know where your property lines are and not levy this against everybody. That's, that's my interpretation. I may be wrong, but I think so.
Want to play a devil's advocate out? Building, you know, there's many different, builders do things differently. That's the first step that I do, is find the outlines. And find those, if you're throwing, you're going to throw an additional cost, excess of $500 onto homeowner, but now. Granted, though, a person that finds a builder should not just justify it because he's cheaper, but this is upon the homeowner himself and the builder to do. If they don't, then what they need to do is quit giving variances and make them adjusted, tear it down, adjust it, make the cost on that builder and that homeowner to absorb that instead of, instead of spreading that cost on everybody else. I think it would be unfair, in my opinion, I think it would be unfair to spread that cost to everyone or to punish everyone to do this. I, I don't like it, I don't think it's fair, I think the planning zoning or the board of adjustments, they should do their job and deny it, quit trying to appease everybody and say, no, you're out of variance, you're over the line, tear the structure down and move it. And this all stems from, from behind the hand of food marters where this comes from, Miller Springs, that's where it comes from, and I just, get those, the track builders to come in there, and they don't care. And the homeowners do it because it's cheaper on them, because that's the way they do business. And I don't think it's right to make good builders and people that watch that pay that extra cost, and it's just asking the homeowner, I disagree with that. Of course, that would be you, the council's decision, that's just my opinion.
The other hand being said, I still like for the, for all the councilmen to take this and read it and understand it, and for us to come back next meeting and decide if we want to have. I mean, in fact, the planning commission is going to be having these public hearings on a long-going basis, I mean, this will, this will be added to one or not, it's not a, it's not a very big deal. But just before we go through the process of having, I'd just like to kind of get a feel for what all the councils saw. What will bring up next meeting?
Is this not a standalone amendment right now, it could be coupled with others? Okay.
Well, it, it will be a separate public hearing, but they're going to group these public hearings, they'll have several public hearings on one.
Okay.
This first one on the 28th, that, that will be a public hearing. If that's passed and goes to the magistrates and they pass it, that's fine. We can have a separate one, we can have a second one that just applies to our city parks town or U.A. or the river.
You know, to do that, you know, I've used a surveyor to have a tough lot, but you have a house that you want to fit on that lot. And I have had a surveyor stake that house off on that tough lot and do that. But, and that's, that's the responsibility of a builder, but I would agree with you, I think it needs, I like to have a public, have the input, I like that I'm here.
You do have a question. As it stands, as it stands right now, when someone is developing or building a home, they already have to have a survey, correct? They can't, they don't have to have a survey?
When you, when you build a home, I'm not speaking from your personal, but if you ask me, would you come and build your home and ex subdivision, the first thing you should do is get a plat of that subdivision where your lot is at, and then you try to locate those corners. If, if I cannot locate it, I'm going to say, Mr. Williams, you need the surveyor to locate the corner pins where I know it's going to be where I can build your home on that. And then you check what your setbacks off on each side, which is, I think, 10 and 15, but you check those setbacks. That is, that's a homeowner's responsibility, if he's bought that lot, to make sure those pins are in there, for the builder. And I, I just, I don't think, I don't think by, by doing that, that's, that's a responsible builder and a responsible soon-be-home owner. And I don't think that additional cost should be spread out for everyone, and if you have a building that doesn't do that, it gets in trouble, then that's where the board of justice comes in and says, you're two foot over the line, or you're two foot too close to the line? Make it correct.
Mayor, if I may, I've got, because it's only the regulation in front of me, a plot plan drawn with scale has to be submitted to the planning commission in order to get a building. It has to show property line, shape, dimension, types of locations, setbacks, sidewalks, so forth, so on, there are eight things required. It's on you.
Yeah, it's not a survey.
No. No, what it is.
No question, survey.
What it is.
No, you just, I can go in and sketch it.
Right. You, you have a picture of your, of your lot, and you sketch your home, and it's not the scale, but you sketch your home on there, and you go, okay, I have 10-foot easement over here, I think you're supposed to have 10 and 15, I don't think it's changed, 15 here, depending on what the regulations are. And then you just sketch it in, and that's, that's what's kind of passed. And they're hoping that your builder, you that have done your homework to make sure the council will put that.
And in these subdivisions, there are the pins, you know, your corner pins are typically there, you know, you can find, they're rebar, and you can find it, and you can go that rebar to that other rebar, and you can kind of, if you need to, pull the line, you know, put a string between them, then you can kind of figure it out. So when you say that a lot of them are surveyed because, you know, they're part of a plat, but if I own a lot in some area that's not been recently platted, you know, do I have to have a survey before I build a house on that lot? No, you don't have to have a survey, but you do need to do a plot plan. And what they do is they try to encourage you, you know, if you're not sure where your lot line is, you better find it out.
Well, when I was on the barren border, a lot of our problems was from people that just had no carport, putting things there, and getting over too far. And even back in those days, we took, I mean, there were some carports that was actually tore down, took off of them. I mean, the rule is there, I mean, it's hard, it's hard to tell something that takes a carport down or go four feet off of it, or, but, you know.
They should have known that poorly, Bill.
I agree. Anything else, Councilman? Okay, let's go to, oh, correspondence, right. Number five, correspondence, and I'll call Martin Howard, Chief Martin Howard, five person.
Sure. Councilman Will, I'd just like to make my yearly request that, for the agenda item that discusses the Arts and Crafts Fair, that you make a condition of that approval, that they not block the streets or, and give us a 12-foot clear space in between the spaces that they set up, they set up in the roadway, which is fine, as long as we have a 12-foot space so that we can still get down those roadways to protect our properties in the city that could have a response needed here and that. I've spoken with the mayor, 12-foot is enough for us to get through there. We normally go out as they're setting up and just make sure that they haven't approached further past that, but I normally ask that for the Arts and Crafts Fair and the urban festival setups that they have out there, just make sure that at the ends of the streets we don't get something set up, a indoor setup, that we wouldn't be able to enter the street to make our way out through there in case we were needing to respond. Just, you can make that a condition of their approval, please.
Mayor, in the future, when we get requests like this, could that be included in the request, so to write it?
I'm going to, when I read this, I'm going to ask for it.
And Roland, I just found that a bad time. Or I would have included it.
I will apologize, in the past, I have submitted that to bargain when I saw this coming in writing, and it slipped past me this year, I saw it on the agenda, and I will try to be better at getting something to the council for that.
I know you've been busy.
Yes, sir.
So, 2015 Arts, Crafts and Antique Fair, October 10th and 11th, 2015. If there is no objection, we adopt a motion to approve the request to close Fifth Street, Fourth Street, Xavier and Weston Flagee on October the 10th and 11th, 2015. This shall include Chief Martin Howard's recommendation of the 12-foot strip on Fifth Street.
On Fifth Street, yes.
Yeah, okay. So if there's no objection, motion to approve the closing of streets for the 2015 Arts and Crafts and Antique Fair is adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Review of the minutes, A, regular council meeting. And then the, what do we, that's the one we said?
That's our just for those two.
Okay. And then the special council meeting, six twenty-five, 2015. And if there's no objections, we'll allow.
Wait, can we do them separately, because I have to accuse myself, one of them, I wasn't here. Wasn't here for the special. You can just abstain from that. I mean, I don't want to abstain from both of them.
Yeah, you can separate them out, so.
All right, we'll do the regular minutes.
I have my head up on the regular minutes. I will vote no on the regular minutes. And my reason for the records to be posted in the minutes, July 14th minutes. Number B on this agenda, June 23rd, 2015, second reading, 215, 216, City of Barstown added budget. This budget had a substantial change from the first reading, $64,852 change. It should have held, require two more readings with this substantial change. What I indicated is in the Kentucky League Cities Official Legal Handbook, edition 215. Also, the budget that was approved, June 23rd, 2015, was not on this city council meeting agenda for me to review. And I will request what I indicated to the city court to be in the minutes.
Are you asking for a correction to the minutes of your council amendment?
I vote no. And the reason I'm voting, I mean, the reason I voted no, but I indicated the reason I voted no, and I would like to request what I indicated to be in the minutes.
The minutes of this meeting?
Yes. I just, what I just indicated, I won't take it. And I request that it would be in the minutes, okay?
Could someone please put a motion for the council for, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular council, the minutes of six twenty-three, 2015.
All in favor?
Discussion, please.
We're not trying to discussion.
I have a question. Is there any way that Councilman Lydian brought this up? This is his second time bringing this up. Is there any way to clear this up? Is there any way to look at the agenda and look at June 9th agenda? I think someone had stated that there was an attachment or something, I don't remember seeing attachment, but is there any way to clear this up? Is there any way to clear this up for Councilman Flannan, says Lydian? Clearly, he thinks that something is wrong. Is there any way to satisfy what he's saying, correct it, or dismiss it, or what have you? City attorney?
There's a motion on the floor, and we can certainly address that at another point after the motion. And vote. So right now, we have a first and a second discussion. Any further discussion on that, sir?
Any further discussion? All in favor? Those opposed? No.
Forty-two.
Forty-two. Councilman Williams, do you want to give yourself a special?
Well, could I go back to, Councilman Cuddling's suggestion? City attorney, my only suggestion is to bring it to the county general's attention.
Yes, I will request it.
Well, I can't do it for you, sir.
Well, I, I'm not sure, I mean, the, the minutes say to accept the annual budget that was presented for first reading on, on six nine, which is what Councilman Hagan stated. He said, the one that was there that had the substantial addition was not the one that he made the motion to approve. So there was no substantial addition to the budget because he referred specifically to the one that was presented on six nine, and that's reflected in the minutes. Now, I don't know, I can't recognize it, so I, but that's, that to me, there's not really an issue that I would say.
My caution to you, attorney. This is official agenda. And here, yes, it's publication requirement, everything's on here. But this budget, what I indicated, here, you pull it up, it had a substantial change, not minor change. A minor change, technical minor change, do not require first and second reading. Substantial change require a second reading. This is Kentucky League of Cities, Colompeal Court case, indicated.
And where was the change? I mean, when, when he, when he referred to the unchanged version?
Let, let, okay, let me, uh.
I, I don't, I mean.
Check, boy. Let me go back to my notes here.
But it's fair to say, Tim, that what council was referring to is that the budget that was in this agenda package, which is, and you didn't match the budget that Fred made the motion on.
Right.
Yes. I think, I think we're all, that's the facts.
And the fact, the fact also, during the meeting, it was brought up by my attention that the council should reference the attachment of the budget for the June 9th meeting.
Which they had in their machine.
Which they had in their machine.
Let me ask you.
And there was no objection at that time for referencing that budget.
Let me ask you, of course, the city court.
Yes, sir.
I have to note, you remember, you indicated to the council member, if there's any change in the first reading of a budget, you'll have to do it all over. You indicated, and also, I don't know how many of you have Kentucky Legal City Official Legal Handbook, it's in there.
Yes, sir.
Minor change, technical minor change, do not require first and second reading, but a substantial change require a second reading. That's my debate. And $64,000, it's not a minor change, it is a substantial change. If you review the budget June 9th and calculate it from June 23rd, you have a total of $64,000 some dollars.
Yes, Councilman Williams, you did, I mean, Councilman Lydian, you did bring that up to our attention. And we, at that time, made a reference to that fact in referencing the budget for the June 9th meeting. Now, as far as the second reading is concerned, the second reading of the ordinance indicates in section one, that the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2015, and ending June 30th, 2016, is hereby adopted as attached heretofore. Now, the attached heretofore was referenced as the June 9th budget.
I will make this, I will make this request, eternal general opinion.
You have to make that request yourself.
Yes, you have to follow up on that. So it doesn't have to be on the agenda, because Fred made the motion to accept the June 9th?
Well, the, the agenda, it said the budget, so you can, here's what you can do.
But for that day's budget, it didn't have to be on there, that's what I'm asking. For, for that day that we met, it did not have to be on there. I'm just trying to do, did it have to be on the agenda?
Yes, the, the budget was on the agenda.
Was it on the, was the budget on the June twenty-third agenda?
The second reading request, yes, ma'am.
And that budget was properly loaded to the agenda?
No, it was not. And it was referenced in this meeting, but that was not the case by Councilman Lydian. Then we brought up the fact that the attachment should be the June ninth budget that was presented with the amendment.
And the, the fact that, the fact that it's, it's in there does not require you to have to go back and have a first reading again on the July ninth budget, because you didn't change the July ninth budget. You brought that forward.
Let me ask you another one.
June, I'm sorry, June.
Let me ask you another question, Attorney. What reason, this budget that had a substantial change, what reason it was not amended? Before you voted on, related to the first reading, what reason why it wasn't amended?
Councilman, Councilman Lydian, do you believe that the, the city council adopted the budget that had the sixty-four thousand dollar change?
My debate is...
So, if you, if, if the, the council did, or someone here thinks that they approved the budget with the sixty-four thousand dollar addition, it was improperly...
No, I did not indicate it. What I'm, I'm debating, it was a change. The first reading budget, and the one of June twenty-third, was identical to the same budget, but it has been changed, so you go back and vote on the June ninth budget, that has been changed.
No, no one, no one voted on the June ninth budget that was changed.
Fred put the motion on the floor, and then the city council approved it. You proved the June the ninth budget.
Right, and the June ninth budget did not have the sixty-four thousand dollars.
The budget that was, the one that I indicated on this agenda, June twenty-third, it's identical to the same budget, June the ninth. It's no different budget, it's the same budget. I mean, we're not, we don't have two separate budgets, that is the same budget, but that budget has been changed.
Do you believe the sixty-four thousand dollars was adopted?
No, I'll just get Attorney General opinion.
Well, if the sixty, if it was, if you believe that the sixty-four thousand dollars was in there, then...
No, you did not...
Do you believe that it is?
You did not vote on the sixty-four thousand dollars. I mean, the one that...
I agree with that.
You did not vote on the one that had an increase. You went back and voted on June the ninth, that was not on the agenda. Now, how do I know? The one you voted on, that might could have been changed. I couldn't see it, I couldn't review it. So, anyway, I'll just, I'll just call Attorney General, and I'll get the Attorney General opinion, and we can go through that.
Any more questions on that? So, we're going to be special council meeting, six twenty-five, two thousand and fifteen. Do you want to review yourself?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting, six twenty-five, two thousand and fifteen.
No.
Is this a...
All right, no.
From the classification?
Yes. You can just refuse yourself.
Special, special meeting you were here for.
No.
No? Okay.
You can just refuse yourself, you know, I mean, I told you, leave the room. That's right. Okay, that's correct, all right. Okay, discussion?
You were here about it.
Bill seconded?
Did he?
Yes. Discussion? Okay, if there's no objections, the special meeting...
We need individual votes.
Okay. All in favor? Those opposed?
And for the record, Councilman Lydian wasn't even on it.
Right.
Please.
We both weren't here for this special meeting.
Okay. Now, we're going to... Yeah, C, the correction to the six nine, two thousand and fifteen, regular council minutes. And, clerk, city clerk, you have the floor.
Right. Since I was not available for the six nine meeting, I went back in the minutes to listen to them from the recording. And there was a motion put on the table by Councilman Hagan to actually amend the budget on first read to reflect the increase that went to the BIDC budget. That motion was seconded by Councilman Williams, and the vote, according to what I could hear, it was six to zero. So, it was necessary, since all actions of the council need to be reflected in the minutes, it's necessary to correct those minutes with that addition. It's reflected by a strike through and the insert.
Just clarifies what we actually do.
Yes, sir, and there was an actual motion.
Yeah.
So, I need the minutes to...
That being the case, I'll make a motion to approve the six nine, two thousand and fifteen, corrected minutes.
Second, Councilman Simpson, discussion? And what the, the motion is to, is to correct the six nine, two thousand and fifteen, regular council meeting minutes. All in favor? Those opposed? As have it, motions adopted. Thank you, Ms. Marty. Number seven, financial report. Okay, we'll have to, she, CFO is off doing training, so we'll have to skip number seven if that's all right. We'll go down to seven B, Scott Ritter versus City of Bardstown. Check request there, and it's agreement, so City Attorney...
Yes, this is the end result of the, this would be the final resolution of the Scott and Ritter matter. And it is, if you all will approve, a, is twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars payment to them to settle the lawsuit, and then the lawsuit can be dismissed. And there's a settlement agreement that is attached that indicates all the, all the conditions and requirements, and they go ahead and warranty the rest of the work, we're not off the hook. If they're not off the hook, if there's some other unknown errors or problems, so. But this is what we've, this was been in negotiation for a while, as you all know, where. So, this is the final step, which would be the improvement of the payment of twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
I move to allow the mayor to sign the check for the settlement agreement.
I'll second it. And the fact that we are writing a check for twenty-seven five, in no way means that we have, we're in violation or something, or we did an error or anything like that.
No, it doesn't, there's no admission of any kind of fault in it.
Number first, or second, discussion? Motion is to authorize the mayor to sign the twenty-seven five agreement. So, all in favor? Those opposed? As have it, motions adopted. Thank you, guys, get that out, out of the way, thank you. Ordinance is number eight, first reading, and I'll, Councilman Williams.
Okay, Mayor, I would like to introduce proposed ordinance B, two thousand and fifteen, rezone number twenty-four thirty-nine, Bedrock Developers, and ask for its summary to be read.
An ordinance amending and adopting as amended zoning map entitled zoning map cities of Bardstown, Bloomfield, Fairfield, New Haven, and Nelson County, Kentucky, by designating Granite Drive, Lot Seven, Bedrock Manor, Bardstown, as LIP planned unit development for a use serving alcohol by the drink, Section six point one six D, parentheses one. The Nelson County Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval based on findings of fact in the record. The property is described as follows. Lot number seven, amended Bedrock Manor Final Platte, as recorded in Platte Cabinet Sixteen, Slot One Ninety-seven, in the Nelson County Clerk's office. This ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication and summary as required by law. And this summary was certified by Timothy Butler, City Attorney.
There's no vote, it's needed for that. Let's move to number nine, the reports of the staff and committees.
And we have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, I am so sorry.
Mayor, I would like to introduce proposed ordinance B, two thousand and fifteen, rezone number twenty-four forty, Lawson Building LLC, and ask for its summary to be read.
An ordinance amending and adopting as amended zoning map entitled zoning map cities of Bardstown, Bloomfield, Fairfield, New Haven, and Nelson County, Kentucky, by designating one twelve North Third Street, Bardstown, as B two, Planned Unit Development, P U D, for a use serving alcohol by the drink, Section six point one two D, option number two. The Nelson County Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval based on findings of fact in the record. The property is described as follows. Bounded on the east by Third Street, on the south by Raspberry Alley, on the west by Mulberry Alley, and on the north by a property owned by David D. Oslander et al., formerly W. O. Stiles. This ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication and summary as required by law. This summary was certified by Timothy Butler, City Attorney.
There's no vote needed on that one. So, now, we're going to report some staff and committees, Jeff is busy at this time, so Larry, do you have anything? Mr. Green?
Yes, we have a, a, yeah. Need to allow the mayor to sign a conservation easement for the sixteen acres at Tanner Hill. It's just a requirement of the state, and they're using Kentucky Land Heritage Conservation Funds to help us to purchase it, and they need to have a conservation easement where we say we're not going to develop the property, which, of course, is, would be hard to develop.
They'll be coming up at this point.
That's okay.
We don't have anything, no?
No, nothing? Two dollars?
No, sir, I'm steadily at work preparing for changes, but everything's going well.
Very good, that's what I like to hear. Any council members have anything?
As I mentioned, next week, I'm going to meet with Jessica to start the discussion on the annexation, going to restart that discussion of the costs and benefits of all those areas we looked at before. Just going to restart that process, we talked about three months ago. And shortly thereafter, I hope to call the annexation committee and get...
Any unfinished business?
You had the KLC convention on here, but we had twelve?
Gotcha.
Oh, okay.
It's all new business.
Fourteen. Oh, okay. Okay, we're going to go to eleven, new business, which, if there's no objection, I'll adopt a motion to approve the reappointment of Tiger Houston to the Cable TV Programming Committee. Objections on that? If there's no objection, the motion is approved, reappointment is adopted by unanimous consent. The reappointment of Tiger is for a three-year term, and it expires in July... Two thousand and eighteen. And then, now, B, which is our two thousand and fifteen dash oh four, is, it's a resolution for Tanner Hill. Now, Larry, you have it?
I'll read it for you. Our two thousand and fifteen oh four resolution, resolution authorizing the mayor of Bardstown to sign the Kentucky Heritage Land Conservation Fund, Conservation Easement for the Tanner Hill property. Whereas the City of Bardstown has received a grant from the Kentucky Heritage Land Conservation Fund for eighty-six thousand to purchase sixteen point zero one two acres of land, south of US one fifty. And whereas the requirement of the KHLCF grant is for the grantee to sign and execute a conservation easement in order to protect the property. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City of Bardstown, Kentucky, that the mayor of the City of Bardstown is hereby authorized to sign and execute a conservation easement for sixteen point oh one two acres off of South First Street and East Stephen Foster Avenue.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second, Councilman Simpson, seconded. Wait.
No, wait.
Oh, stupid. I'm ready to say it. Oh, okay. No, it's okay.
Canada's waiting.
All right, Canada, Canada's waiting. Discussion? The resolution, our two thousand and fifteen dash oh four, is a resolution for Tanner Hill, is... All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? As have it, motions adopted. Thank you, guys. And now, we're at number twelve, Councilman Williams, the KTC convention. Make sure that, if you call Kathy to register for the Lake League City Convention, if you plan to attend. Now, Councilman, have any...
I was just going to say, anyone that has an opportunity to go, it's very worthwhile. They have a lot of, a lot of educational information, and I'm too busy to go, but I've gone on occasion and really enjoyed the experience. Would highly recommend.
I attended a meeting at the Maple Hill Residents Association, or the group. They have signs, the neighborhood watch signs that they want to purchase. It's going to be approximately around five hundred dollars to do those signs, and I think to, we don't have a problem putting them up as a city, they're going to purchase those, they'd like to, but they need five hundred dollars. And I think Maple Hill area residents can be a starting block for other neighborhoods to join in and look at their neighborhood, and, you know, feel, pick their feet up and go with it like they have. They've also, in the discussion, we talked about, they're going to have a cleanup day. It's going to be two days of cleanup. They have a large group of volunteers that are wanting to come out and help clean up the neighborhood by washing houses and mobile lines, just do whatever is necessary to help all the neighbors out there, because it is kind of a growing, older community, so. It's going to be, it's a good, good thing, and I think it can be an example for other neighborhoods within the city of Bardstown, that can be a good example. So, if you want to think about that, that's what they're asking for, is to look up, get those signs. The other thing is that I have a, dry weather is coming, I have a mosquito machine on its way. Hopefully, we'll be here Thursday or Friday, with the instructor that is coming with it. And I'm supposed to meet with him Thursday afternoon. The war's on, because it's going to be dry, and they're going to be, it's going to be heavy. I've talked to some other surrounding counties, and they are, they're preparing, and they know it's going to be terrible. The state has already been swamped with excessive amount of colic. Anyway, any other council, anybody?
Yes. Is there any way that we could have Hope Hawkins present for the next council meeting to discuss the survey for Maple Hill and other grant opportunities?
That, that's fine, if you'd like, she, that hasn't come to light yet, I mean, it's just in the infancy of it, but it's, if you want to hear it.
Well, also for other opportunities with other areas.
Will you invite, excuse me, will you invite, do you want me to?
Also, I was a representative for the Kentucky Black Caucus, Leah, over the weekend in Rackford, Kentucky. The governor candidate, Matt Bevan, was there, and the Democrat Lieutenant Governor candidate, Sandy Overly, was there. And they had a small debate in regards to questions that were posed to them, in regards to... in regards to early education, veterans, race relations, and things of that nature. So it was very good, very informative. These are quarterly meetings, and any elected official is invited. It does not have to be an African-American, it can be anyone. So the next time that we have one, I will definitely invite all of the council and any... And Mayor, and hopefully, we will get some more representation. Also, Councilman Williams is a board member of that as well. So thank you.
Anybody else? Let's move to cemetery deeds. And if there's no objection, we will adopt a motion to approve the cemetery deeds for Barry and Carla Grayling, Linda Freeman, Demitra, and Charles Nubie. Since there's no objection, the motion to approve the cemetery deeds is adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. There's no anniversaries this month. So now, we are going to... If there's no objection, I want to go into executive session in pursuant to CARIS sixty-one point eight one zero one D. Discussion of the public agency and representative of a business entity to discuss a certain proposal. If open to discussion, we recognize the city of the citing...
How do I say city?
Citing of the business.
Mayor, I'll make the motion. We're going to executive session.
First by Councilman Hagan.
Second.
Second by Councilman Williams. All in favor? No objection, ayes. Executive session.